Okay, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being September 26, 2017. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. The meeting is also being broadcast live on PAT. I'd like to first start the meeting with a moment of silence, but before we do, I'd like to turn it over to Beverly Griffin Dunn, who wanted to make a dedication on our moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like everyone to hold in their hearts the memory of Eleanor Dombowski. Mrs. Dombowski passed away last week. She was a longtime secretary for the district, secretary to the superintendents, for over thirty-two years. She was a lovely person, and she was always so pleasant and always so professional to anyone, whether she worked for them, or whether they were a member of the public coming in to speak with an administrator. She was Miss Dealey when she retired, and I know she raised a wonderful family who will miss her terribly.
Thank you. If everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Levine for the introduction of two terrific young students that we have today from the Brown School. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's my pleasure to introduce two Brown School students, Joey Panaccio. Joey is eight years old and is in Mrs. McMahon's second grade class at the Brown School. He loves to read, do yard work, not sure why he would like to do yard work, but, and especially likes helping his mom with chores around the house. He has a sister named Joya, who attends the Brown School, who I just met, lovely. And his teacher reports that he likes helping others, and he loves math. Joey's favorite food is anything with sugar. All right. Joey, if you could come up and stand with the mayor? And Joey has my haircut from when I was his age. Same haircut, same color. I'd like to introduce Summer Powell. Summer is six years old and is in Mrs. Davies' first grade class at the Brown School. She enjoys doing ballet and gymnastics. She also likes working with Play-Doh. She has a brother named Kyle, who attends the Higgins Middle School. And Summer's favorite things to do in school are drawing and learning about stuff. I like to learn about stuff, too. As a matter of fact, every Friday, I send out a memo to the school committee, and the title is "Stuff."
That's right.
Her favorite food is pizza. So is mine. We'll go out for pizza someday. Your principal will take us. And pay for it. Summer, would you come up and join the mayor, please, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
That was wonderful. See those smiles? Okay, we'll go to the agenda now. I did want to say that tonight, we have all members of the school committee present, our superintendent, Dr. Levine, assistant superintendent, Kara Mertag, our business manager, Jared Stanton, and our human resources director, Steve Farrell. And let's jump right into our approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve minutes for September 12, 2017.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. You've heard his motion for approval of the minutes of September 12, 2017, regular school committee meeting, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number, oh, number 3587, dated September 26, 2017, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and zero cents. Subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 3587, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3589, dated September 26, 2017, in the amount of nine hundred, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred, eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Subject to audit.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. You've heard her motion for approval of warrant B, number 3589, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Great.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Now we'll go on to continued business. We have two items. First item is the MSBA Higgins Project. Any new updates, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Higgins School Building Committee met last Thursday for our monthly meeting. At that meeting, we learned about the next phase that we're going into. It's called the closeout process. It's actually a very definitive time for the architect and the owner's project manager. They will be going through very specific steps, preparing for the actual closeout of the project. So we are coming to the end of the Higgins building. One of the things that we'll be going through is that they're going to establish all the warranties, and they are evaluating warranties on all the equipment that is in this building. Some of the bugs that are being worked out of the system fall under the warranties, and some of the issues actually end up generating a new warranty, so that the warranty period begins anew when certain items have been corrected. So they'll be giving us a report on that near the end of the closeout period. The anticipation is to have everything being prepared between now and December, and closeout will probably take place in January. Let's see. The, let me see, the lighting inside the building has been a problem for the neighbors, and that has been discussed with the owner's project manager, the architect, and anyone else who's involved in that. And what is frustrating for them is, the lighting in the stairwells is very bright at night, and it runs all the time. The lighting in the building is actually computerized, and it had all been controlled and appropriately scheduled, and then the program changed. And they're trying to figure out what happened, but they are reprogramming, and hopefully by, actually, I think today, the lights should be corrected. It's, again, it's a whole issue on computerization, and I was very surprised to learn that we couldn't just have someone shut off the lights. So when we start calling the computer in the building "hell," we know we're in trouble. Let me see. We had a discussion about the change orders, and we had, the committee had asked for a breakdown on the change orders, and because we were concerned, a lot of the, a lot of the work done on the, on this entire site, and especially, believe it or not, especially on the Phase Two site where the athletic fields are, it included a lot of unanticipated ledge, and it needed to be blasted. There was seriously no way around it, no pun intended. What ended up happening is that the ledge was blasted, it was pulverized on site in many cases, and it was reused whenever possible to minimize the cost to the project. So there were a lot of cost-saving measures put into place, even in light of the fact that all this ledge came up. That was, it represents sixty-four percent of the changes that we had to implement on the entire project. But we are under one percent of the total cost of the project on change orders, which is actually unheard of, and they were very pleased to be able to report that. So the money and the numbers attached to that will be forthcoming once they do that final closeout, because right now, as I've told you, like with the punch list, they go through that punch list for any items in the building that need to be tended to. Once it's taken care of, it goes on to the punchback list. They go and check it again. And then if it's not done to specifications, it goes back on to the punch list for further action. So some of these things are going back and forth, and it may sound, you know, it may be a bit frustrating at the moment, but they're really keeping a very good handle on it, and the numbers are coming in very good for this project. They were very pleased by it. Let's see. Excuse me, one second. The seeds, the seeding out in the grass, they're going to seed again. Everything, of course, depends upon the weather, but this is so that we have a really, really viable surface for the athletics that will take place out there. One thing we did discuss was getting some signs that say, "Please stay off the grass," because it looks great, but it's not ready to be used, and people need to know that. So walking around the field, on the walking path, is great, but having any type of a game out there just isn't going to help anybody, because it's just going to cause problems down the road. We really want it to be able to get really, really embedded. We also discussed, the favorite topic of everyone, the grass out in front of the building. And they're coming up with some solutions and suggestions on that, and I think I'll have some more for you at the next meeting, about how we're going to attend to the, it's called a rain guard.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
And our next meeting will take place October 19, 4:00 p.m., here at the Higgins.
Thank you. Next item, we continue, continue.
There's a question.
Oh, you have a question? I'm sorry. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, for the chair, Ms. Dunn. Thank you again for all you've done, chairing that building committee. Could you have one quick question regarding the grass on the entrance from Perkins that swings all the way around? It would be then James, and then looking to the right, it would be Bradley, up against the fences there, up against neighbors. At times, it's looked very unkept. Do we have a schedule in the future of maintenance on that particular area? It is, it is a large area, but it is the entrance from Perkins all the way through, I believe, to the north entrance?
Goes all the way around the school.
And the fencing is right there, and we do have neighbors that are but there, but we can maybe get a schedule of maintenance and?
Actually, we do. We, we had one, they presented it to us the meeting before last, and there was a lot of discussion about that, because Parks and Recreation, as well as the facilities manager, are going to work on that. We actually were kind of disagreeing with some of the recommendations on how often the grass should be mowed. We would, we would like it mowed a lot more frequently than it said on the plan, and the people involved actually agree with that. So they have a whole, a whole, a map, actually a map with every area of lawn and any type of growth, all patterned out according to what's a recommended mowing schedule. And I can get that for you. I can get that to the school committee members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item, athletic event fees for students. I believe we were waiting for a meeting that we're going to have in October, and then we can, go ahead, Mr. Rosignol.
Yep. We actually had a meeting September 19. In attendance was Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Hockman, myself, Mr. Buah, Mr. Buckley, Mr. Simmons, Dr. Levine, oh, and Mr. Stanton. The topics to be, that was discussed, and first of all, I need to thank all of those department heads, because they came up with roughly what it would cost us in lost revenue by allowing students to enter all events for free, whether it be drama, whether it be chorus, corral, coffeehouse, football, basketball, et cetera. The rough price tag was going to be between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's going to be the total nut. For drama, it was approximately between six and eight thousand dollars, and then for sports, it was the remainder. The question, there were a lot more questions than answers, to be perfectly honest with you, in that meeting. One of the suggestions at the table at one point was any middle school student or under having to come in with one adult-paid ticket, so that we knew that there was going to be supervision. Because out of the first game, one of the feedbacks that we had gotten was possible need for increased police presence if students are going to be allowed to come in free. That may expand the attendance, and that may trigger the need for increased security. So that was one of the topics brought up. Another topic that was under discussion was the rink. The reason being is, the current format that we have at the rink is, we pay half of the tickets that we sell. So for instance, if, Mr. Mayor, you go and you buy a ticket to go see a hockey game, we cover the cost of three dollars or half of that ticket. So we'd actually be paying the rink even more money than we do, so we're, and I'll yield to Dr. Levine if there's any feedback from the discussions regarding what we're paying the rink and what they give us back.
I think last year, we wrote a check to them for four hundred and some odd dollars, and we do lose money on hockey games, every game. A proposal was made, actually, by our athletic director in discussion, actually, I think it was made by you, Jared, in discussion with Mike Ingris out of your office, because it's actually the city that sets the rates, or approves the rates that are recommended, and Mike Ingris has been involved in that. And they came up with a compromise solution that everybody seems happy with, and that is that the hockey, that the rink will take the proceeds of charged folks who come into a hockey game, but we will owe them nothing, and we will be able to move into the rink anybody that we want that doesn't pay. So that won't cost us money. In the past, that has cost us money. So any parents or any kids that we've allowed in for at no charge has been a cost back to us. Everybody seems to be happy with that, and I spoke with Mr. Buah this afternoon, just before this meeting, and he said he'll have final figures for me over the next couple of days, well in advance of the next meeting.
And, thank you. The last topic of discussion was Thanksgiving games. Being a shared gate may be pulling that one completely off the table as far as a free gate for students. Anyway, so what I'm going to do is, with the feedback from the rink, I'm going to set up basically a proposal. We'll have one more meeting before our next school committee meeting, so I'll have a presentation for the entire board.
Great. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the chairman of the special, of the athletic committee, Mr. Rosignol. I thought that I had, subsequent to the meeting, was regarding the Thanksgiving game, and Saguas is our opponent historically, and I don't see that changing. Could we perhaps reach out to Saguas's school committee or superintendent to see if we allowed Saguas students in at no charge for the Thanksgiving game? If we could keep our students from paying for the, to go, to attend that game? Just a thought out there.
Because this year, it's in Saguas.
Correct. That was going to be.
We have some time.
Right, exactly. So this really wouldn't affect us budgetarily until next year, but that can certainly be a discussion we can certainly have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosignol, for taking this on. Okay, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak? The microphone is open. I don't see no one. We'll go to superintendent's report. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a recommendation to approve the Deca Field Trip to Philadelphia, November 10 through the 13th.
Make a recommendation to follow the superintendent.
Second.
You've heard the motion, seconded all in favor? So, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, to go on.
Oh, yeah, please.
Okay. I would like to say publicly that tomorrow is Go for the Gold, where we're recognizing the effort this month for childhood cancer, and I would ask Kara to talk about some of the things that we're doing in all of our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Some of the things that we're going to do is, all children are going to receive a gold sticker, gold, wearing a sticker, and the older children, the older students are wearing gold bows, gold socks, gold everything. So, and student advisory boards have done some work as well. So I want to thank everybody for their efforts in recognizing that. And as, I don't know if you saw tonight, if anybody came into the back of the Higgins, they have it on the big sign that says, "Go for Gold."
This is a citywide effort, and I want to thank our principals and Kara and all of our administrators who have worked hard, and our teachers, to make this a successful event. I'll be wearing my gold king's hat tomorrow. I would ask Jared to talk about the FY17 budget, actually, and in your packet, you also have the FY18 update.
Through the chair. So I'm happy to report that we did close the FY17 fiscal year. We cover all of our summer payroll, summer obligations. There's a number of people I want to thank, especially Mr. Ingris, for his patience dealing with me closing this out. So we closed out, and now on to FY18.
We closed out at zero.
Thank you. That's good news. Any questions, Mrs. Dunn?
I'm sorry, were we able to pay anything forward that we were allowed?
We were not. We do have a little bit of retro money that's going to be paying for the retro raises that, for AFMEET that are coming in the next month or so.
That's encumbered.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, to move on. You have in your packet the Pledge of Allegiance schedule for the school committee meetings upcoming. I did want to tell the school committee that I had the pleasure today of accompanying the junior ROTC Air Force cadets from our high school, some very, very fine students, mature, courteous, and represented us at Pease Air Force Base in a way that if you drew it up on paper, you wouldn't get a better representation. Major Ruko, and I, and Ms. Flynn from the high school, were new sergeant with the program. We had the opportunity to fly in two different KC-135 refuelers, and we had the opportunity to be up close and personal with an F-16 as it was being refueled. And our kids, I think, were amazed, as I was. This happens to be my son's plane. My son is a retired lieutenant colonel in the Air Force, and he, for 23 years, flew the KC-135, so it was particularly special for me. I did want to say to the community that in a high school the size of Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, you get these opportunities. You get the opportunity of a tremendously large, wonderful, productive, and talented music program, drama program, sports program, extracurricular activities program. We allow kids to be able to explore things that they might not like, but they find out because we offer it. And they get to explore things that they love because we offer it. We are a comprehensive high school. We offer many, many opportunities for our kids in every grade level. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, I'll put our kids up against any kids in any high school, anywhere in the state, and I've been in a lot of high schools. These kids in Peabody are fabulous. I urge you, as you start to make your decisions about private school, parochial school, and many of those choices are wonderful, to at least give a look to Peabody High School. On November 30, Peabody High School will be having its Y-Pebody High Night. It will be the last in a series of open houses for parents who have been to various schools as they make choices, particularly from the eighth grade to the ninth. Come up and see Peabody High School. It's a tremendous building with tremendous kids, great, talented teachers, committed to our kids, and it's a wonderful place to be. I love going there. Every time I walk into the place, it has a great feel, and I know high schools. I've spent most of my life in high schools. When you walk into Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, it just feels good. It's a good place to go to school, and we will compete academically with anybody. So I urge the community, take a look, because your kids will be offered many things that they can't get elsewhere. It's a wonderful place to be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well said, Dr. Levine. Thank you. We have no written communications today, so we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get into the report, if I can ask Dr. Levine, can we get a flyover on November 30?
It's done. It's done. I, of course, will be flying the plane, so I'm not sure that I wouldn't duck.
It evokes a vision of a Disney movie, perhaps. Anyway, the Education Subcommittee was scheduled to meet tomorrow here at the Higgins. We've been asked to reschedule that, and we're happy to accommodate and reschedule that meeting for Monday, October 2, here at the Higgins, at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance, Mrs. Carpenter, anything to report?
No, nothing to report. I just had a question back on the agenda, though, written communications. It says we have a request. Do we have a request? On the bottom of it, does it say, "Request for Information Under the Mass Public Records Law"? Am I the only person that has that?
I have that.
I don't.
You don't have that?
I don't either.
I don't have it. I do know that recently, we did receive a request under the public records law.
I just passed it down.
It was for the buses. Yeah, I don't have that. For some reason, it's cut off here.
And then flip it over, there's a number two as well.
That was last, that was last meeting, those two items.
So they just carried over?
Those are the two items from last meeting.
But I am looking at the right date.
The knee ass.
I know, I have the same thing. I have the same thing.
Yeah, because the date's correct. Okay, so this isn't anything new. This is a leftover.
As long as it came up, just so the community knows, that public records request was dealt with immediately, and we sent that into the requesting body.
Okay, so it was just on the electronic version? It wasn't on?
Yeah, it's not on the computer.
Okay, okay. No, sorry. And I had nothing to report under finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
I'm going to report.
School safety, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Rosignol, I think you gave your report, or?
Yep. So I'm just going to schedule one more meeting before our next school committee meeting, as well as, there's a couple of other items that I think are going to impact budgetarily for next year that won't impact this year as far as preseason games and things like that, that I'd really like to see us absorb, because having boosters paid for things like that, I think, is absurd personally. But, anyway, so there'll be a couple of topics coming forward over the next coming meetings. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time.
Liaison to city council and advisory boards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night, Mr. Amico and Mr. Olympio and I had our first meeting of the year with the parent advisory board, and the parents that were there, they're really, so much, so nice to talk with. They came through with a lot of good information and a lot of good ideas for our year going forward. The meeting really was that, setting the agenda for the year, finding out what specific items of interest there were for people, if they wanted any speakers. You're both in demand, Dr. Levine and Mr. Mayor, so we'll send you an invitation. But it was, it was very productive. One of the things that we spoke of was, last year, we had a suggestion, actually, I will be honest, it came from the representative from the center school, Jason Palin, and we had worked on a letter. So this year, the letter is all ready to go. It's short and to the point, and it will go out to each school. This was what we had planned on last year, go out to each school, and it will identify who the specific parent advisory board representative is for that school, so that parents will know that they can talk to that person if they have concerns or questions. And as you know, the parent advisory board is a communication subcommittee, where we hear from the parents with their concerns or suggestions, we get answers for them, we bring the suggestions to this board, we get the answers for the questions, give them back, and then they report back to their PTOs. So it works very well. When it, when it works, it works very, very well. Couple of things that the people brought up were, let's see, they were looking for a report, if we could, on shades. Apparently, there are some classrooms in certain buildings that need shades, and it had been brought to their attention as far as a safety consideration. So they asked if? a report, if we could, on shades. Apparently, there are some classrooms in certain buildings that need shades, and it had been brought to their attention as far as a safety consideration. So, they asked if we could find out if any classroom needs shades and if those could be installed. The Burke School is all set. We know they got new shades. These are older, older buildings. We also had a request about lights, and actually, it was specifically mentioned at the Welch and the high school, that the outside lights are just not adequate at night for people. The high school especially, this has been a longstanding issue, and the parents kind of reiterated it. Out back on the back drive into the stadium, like behind the portables, it's pitch black. And of course, it's much more noticeable now with the, with the change in seasons. It's going to get even worse when we, when we set the clocks back. But just asking if we could improve the lighting there, and if we could check to make sure that all the outside lights at all the schools, but especially Welch and high school, were checked, just to make sure that they're all working water. We also had a suggestion that we try the Best Buddies Program, which I know they have that at the high school, and I think they have here at Higgins, that that might be something to see if it could be extended into the elementary schools were appropriate. It sounded like a good suggestion. And we are going to, let's see, oh, I'm sorry, another item here. The fee for payment online for lunches, parents were asking about that, just asking if that can be looked at, if it has to continue. It's a dollar ninety-five, I think. And they actually needed just a little bit more information on that, so I'll actually, you know, I'll have, if Mr. Stanton can answer that, it'd be great.
Through the chair. So, right now, MySchoolBucks, they collect that dollar ninety-five convenience fee. I believe there's a limit of up to $200 that you can put in at one time. When I did a presentation last year at the Higgins, I was telling people, the more you add, the less you would have to pay in the convenience fee. But that can't be waived. That's not any revenue that we receive. It's a standard fee that they actually charge all of their districts that use the MySchoolBucks website.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, a question about the breakfast program. There was some confusion at the Welch, and they thought that there might be just a communications glitch where people hadn't realized the program had changed their having breakfast in the cafeteria, not in the classrooms. That was a change, and parents need to know about that. And then, there was the ongoing question about the insurance for the PTOs, and we did tell the parents, we're going to look into this, and I know it requires more research, but they did have a lot of questions about that. So, our next meeting will be October twenty-third. It's going to be on a Monday night. We're going to stick with the third or fourth Monday of the month each time. And we're still in the process of getting parent advisory board representatives. They have them at all the elementary schools. They do have one at the Higgins. Parents who were there, kind of doing double duty, they were disappointed that there isn't one from the high school, and they would like to have someone from the high school. So, I'm going to let Mr. Amico and Mr. Olympio jump in if they have any, any more additions to that.
Through the chair. Thank you, Ms. Dunn, for chairing that committee, and as you said early on in your talk, it's just nice to have parents coming in and discussing any issues they may have and bringing forward any concerns or even recommendations. And you had mentioned the FKO before, before-school program was basically thought of by a parent or two, and they brought it to our, to our subcommittee, and we brought it in front of the school committee, and we were able to, you know, help some parents with that. So, if there are any parents out there that are really interested in getting involved, this is the way to do it. Join, join this group, and we meet every, once a month. Last, last Monday, the third Monday of the month, I believe.
Third or fourth, depends on the holidays.
Third or fourth, depending. But it's a, it's a great subcommittee, so thank you for chairing that again.
My pleasure.
Please, Mr. Olympio.
And also, too, I'll add that this is, will be an open invitation to all PTOs. The West PTO will be coming to my office probably the end of October, but I would be glad to help some of these PTOs review their stand-in with the IRS and the Secretary of State's office with Massachusetts, because some PTOs, I'm not sure, but they have a lot of questions. You know, some of them don't feel like maybe they, they might be legitimate 501(c)(3), so I offered my services, you know, obviously, to, free of charge, to just help them make sure that the paperwork is correct and that they don't have any surprises down the road.
Mr. Olympio, thank you for doing that, though. I know that's, yeah, that's a great benefit to, to PTOs that you'd be willing to offer those services, because I know a lot of work goes into that.
Yeah.
And that'd be great, too. A lot of work that the PTO officers do, and be able to maybe have you helping, that's terrific. Thank you for that.
We've done that already at the Burke and the McCarthy, so.
Yeah, it was really so nice of Mr. Olympio to volunteer to do that, and the parents were thrilled, because for many people, you know, everybody on a PTO is a volunteer, and they don't have this specific expertise of dealing with a lot of, you know, taxes and filings with the, with the state. And it, you could, you could see visibly, there were a lot of minds that were put to ease after Mr. Olympio spoke with people and answered their questions right there. And then, you know, as far as being able to ask someone, an expert in the field, some really specific questions, I think it's, it's wonderful, because it's something that the PTOs really, really do need to make sure that everything operates properly. But this is really a huge endeavor, and I want to thank you for that, too, because it meant a lot to those people.
Great. Thank you for that report. Building and grounds, Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback on what the superintendent had mentioned about the great things that are going on at the high school, and I believe, is it November thirtieth? Is it the Y-Pebody? Another reason, we've renovated many of the aspects in, at the high school there, the new gym floor, the new lighting, the auditorium has been renovated. So, not only are there great things going on, but there are great facilities within the building now. So, please, if you can, make that, make that date, put it on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are meeting at the Higgins, seven o'clock, October second, Monday, so this Monday. Also, too, I attended the CPAC meeting last Tuesday, and, and actually, on our first meeting on October second, Ms. Grooby will actually be speaking with us, too, so that was, that'll be a big help. I also attended the CPAC meeting last Tuesday, and it was a great turnout. There was a lot of parents there, a lot of new parents within the district, and the vibe was very positive. There was a lot of good questions, a lot of good input. I was fortunate enough that I was, I was able to speak and answer some questions. A couple of questions that did come up, and there were some parents that were a little concerned with the status of start times, the start times changes with the elementary schools. And I, I told the parents that right now, that's still in subcommittee. There's really nothing that's on the horizon with that. So, the way some of these parents felt is something, a change was going to happen soon, and I kind of put their concerns or fears to rest on that end. And also, too, they were asking about the Kylie School, and I told them that we have not heard anything back yet from the state, so. And that was it. There was a little bit of misinformation that was out there, that I was able to kind of straight, you know, get them straight on that, so.
I can, I can report that the Kylie School's under consideration, that they haven't made any decision, but I think it will be shortly, so as soon as we hear, we'll share with everybody.
Yep. And I think you probably actually should.
Mr. Amico, maybe we could talk and set up a meeting to discuss that?
Sure.
Great. Oh, sorry, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of overheard you in the superintendent talking, and I think I agree. I'd like to make a motion to receive this. I think we typically have hiring reports in our packets, and they should be public documents. So, I'll make a motion to receive this.
Okay.
Second.
For the motion by Mr. Hockman to receive the most recent hiring status report, second of mine, Mrs. Dunn, all in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Hockman and Mrs. Carpenter?
If I can inquire of Mr. Farrell through you regarding the hiring report. The report that you gave us, and thank you for continuing to give us these reports, they are extremely valuable, at least to me. It has four positions that, or four people leaving for a variety of reasons, and one of those positions was filled. Are we actively seeking to fill the other three positions?
Yes, they should be filled within the next week or two. There's interviewing going on.
So, you have candidates and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, to Mr. Olympio and Mrs. Dunn. In regards to the school start times, that is still in subcommittee, and we do have a meeting coming up, but I'm interested to know, I'm not sure if the people that you were speaking to were concerned if something's happening, or if they have some opinions and some thoughts that they wouldn't mind sharing with you and you could bring back, and the same through Parent Advisory Board. Right now, we're in the process of, it's a very complicated, huge endeavor, and I don't see anything happening anytime soon, but I think the value of the public and the parents and in all different groups would benefit these meetings.
On that, Mr. Olympio?
Yeah, Mrs. Carpenter, I, so the parents, yeah, they were just concerned with where it was at, and, and I did assure them that, you know, maybe there'd be public participation, there would be some input. And once I told them that, told them that they completely were at ease with, you know, where it's at, because I think they were just afraid of, they were going to wake up one morning, and all of a sudden, things were going to change.
They thought something was going to happen.
And I, I told them that if we were, if I equated this to a baseball game, we're probably at the top of the second inning in the process, so, yeah, so they were completely at ease.
So, they were afraid that they would be at school at eight o'clock and be three hours late?
Exactly, exactly. Yep, yeah.
On that topic, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. And I would, one of the, one of the things I could say about this committee in my eight years that I've been on it is we're extremely transparent.
Yeah.
A substantive change in school day would not occur
Right.
without public input. And to Ms. Carpenter's statements, this is a huge endeavor, and it's a slow process. No one's rushing to any conclusions or judgments, and there will be ample opportunity for the public to meet and to have an opportunity to express an opinion on this subject as we develop some more data and some information. And nothing, I don't expect the transparency of this committee to change
Right.
at all.
And, Mr. Hockman, that's, I more or less said that at the meeting, and I, yeah.
Good, thank you. Good, on this topic?
I just wanted to go back to Mr. Farrell.
Please, Mr. Amico.
Through the chair of the committee, I just wanted to thank Mr. Farrell. It wasn't too long ago that this, this sheet was three or four times the size of it, and I just wanted to thank you for your great, great work, you and your HR department, on getting it down to two or three potential hires here. So, thank you.
Great, excellent. Mr. Rosignol?
Under new business, just for the public certification, are we still on the timeline for superintendent search? Did it go out on September?
It went out on September eight that day, and the closing is October sixth.
October sixth. So, just for the public's edification, so it's already out to bid for any and all candidates to apply for the superintendent with the end date of October sixth. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were still on that same timeline.
Glad you brought that up.
Thanks, okay.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. So, I am getting older, and we voted on some of these, some of the procedures in the spring, so I don't recall, do we, the end date's October sixth for the applications, they're then going to go to the MASC, who we've engaged, and they're going to review them and come to us with, I think we said five or six?
The vote was for five.
Five candidates. Do we have dates set for site visits or interviews or things like that?
None of that has been set up yet.
Is that something that we should entertain now, or maybe at our October ten meeting, or sometime in the future? I'd like to see the process continue to flow as nicely as it has.
I suggest, I do, I suggest we put that on for October tenth.
Thank you.
Great, excellent meeting. Mrs. Dunn, do you have a comment?
Just a quick one off the agenda. I'd be happy to tell you about the first meeting with the North Shore Essex Regional Technical Agricultural High School.
Okay. Should we put that?
First off, they're working to, to change the name, because it is officially North Shore Essex Agricultural and Technical High School, but the building is actually named North Shore Technical High School. And so, they are working on that to bring them both together, to preserve the heritage of the Essex Aggie, but to look towards the future with technology. So, it was a very interesting meeting, and I want to thank you for appointing me. I really do want to work hard to work with the two districts to be able to improve the vocational opportunities for all the Peabody students. The meeting was very interesting. It's, it's fun to go to a different school committee meeting and see how it's operated. It operates very similarly to ours, a lot of information, a lot of facts and figures. They had a presentation by one of the, one of the people who works at that sports complex that's on the grounds. There were a lot of questions. I asked a lot of questions about that. They also had all kinds of discussion about the actual admissions process, and it was a very interesting conversation, because one of the concerns, the very first couple of years when they were bringing students into the program, they were using a very specific way of choosing who would go to the school. And now, Dr. Lupini would like to bring forward a bit of a different model, and they're doing a lot of research on this, because they want to make sure that all students have a good opportunity to get into that school. Presently, a lot of the criteria are based on grades, test scores. They want to make sure that if someone's going to be an incredible mechanic, auto mechanic, that they have the chance to go to that school. Presently, they interview over 1,200 students individually, and they are the only vocational school that does that. They actually go out and interview each student that wants to go to the school. It's a huge process. They, they do look at the, the records of these students, but they're trying to make sure that they have a really good cross-section of students at the school. And that was, that was encouraging, because I know that's been a concern of people, of, you know, how does a student get into that school? What if someone hadn't been the greatest of students, but they're going to be an amazing tradesman? They want to look into that, and they've actually got people working on that issue. That was very nice. Just like us, they, they receive donations. They're very different. People donate cars for the students to work on, and they actually received a donation of two show horses for their equestering program. So, none of you are going to have the chance to do that, but I did. And the people on the board, there are 20 members, there are 17-member communities, there are three agricultural members, and our vote, our Peabody vote counts for seven because of the number of students we have at the school. So, I thank you again. From time to time, I'll, I'll give you an update on it, but very, very interesting, and a lot of good work going up there, a lot of, of nice back and forth about working with Peabody, all with kids as the focus. And that was really nice, to hear how much they want to help students to become successes. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. That was a great report. And, yeah, I think we may be every month or so, or, you know, whenever you think it's warranted, please let us know and give us, provide us an update. That reminded me, I do want to try to invite Jim Lee Akos to a meeting in October so we can thank him for his, his assistance and service for us by, by serving on that board. So, I'm going to talk to him about one of the dates in October to have him come to a meeting. Great, excellent meeting. Thank you, everyone. Items for the next agenda, we can handle in the regular course of business. Motion adjourned. You've heard the motion, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Seven weeks, not a meeting? I know, it's a pressure.